Thursday, July 16th, Capitola Planning Commission meeting to order. And just as a reminder, this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable, Channel 8, and is being recorded to be replayed next Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter, Channel 71, and Comcast, Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed and listened to, I hope, through the live streaming on the city's website. Our technician tonight is Mike Oliphant, and as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and if you do approach to speak, please write your name on the clipboard that's at the podium so that we can reflect it correctly in the minutes. Now, if we could please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Chairperson Smith?
Here. This is a time for oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did distribute an errata sheet for...
Item 4B.
Item 4B, and that should be on your desk, and there's copies in the back of the room.
Thank you. This is a time for public comments. These are short communications from the public. Anybody who's here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, please approach now.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Bowman. I live at 714 Orchid Avenue. Back fence goes to Monterey Park. Guess why I'm here? As we stress over this project, some of the issues that will be itemized eventually, I'm sure, but most of them are regarding noise, skating to and from the park. There are some differences that make this project unique, both because of the McGregor project being in such close proximity, but also because it's up on a hill rather than like Derby Park, which is down in a hole. Also, we're bordering, there's quite a number of houses bordering. Most of us are shaking in our boots. I mean, we are, you know? Not because we hate kids, but because we're kind of worried. It's not noise, it's the kind of noise. It sounds, it drives people crazy. It drives skaters crazy who have to live next to it. So, I believe that something to consider would be to scale it down. I think that most of the issues that I am most concerned about will be solved if it's down, back down to the original 2,000-square-foot proposal, because I think this will be for smaller kids, and that we want families and kids to be using the park, of course, and they'll use the skate park in a more reasonable way, in a way that is expected when you live near a park. We love hearing the sounds of kids. We love hearing the liveliness of the park, and that, it'll be more in reasonable hours and in reasonable, you know, ways. What we're worried about is before, after climbing the fence, I sent out videos that shows fences don't stop the bigger folks, and if we bring it down to make it for little kids, the big guys will go over to the McGregor Park, and I think it'll help a lot. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any Commissioner comments?
I have one. We've had this in the past, some complaints about vacation homes and the non-vacation areas, and so I've received a couple more in the last couple of weeks, and one today. So, it's right here, Katie, the address, and typically it just has to do with people renting homes that's not in that vacation rental zone. I know you guys are looking at it, I just have one more for you.
Maybe staff could just announce tonight what the procedure is if someone is having a problem with that in Capitola. What's the best thing for them to do?
Yeah, Commissioner Ortiz, if a resident notices that there's a vacation rental in their neighborhood, which is outside the transient rental overlay zone, which is generally the village area, they can contact staff, file a complaint, and we'll pursue enforcement to stop that illegal vacation rental.
They call City Hall?
They call City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Are the complaints mainly coming from individual owners, or are some of the rental, vacation rental agencies actually participating in shorter rentals?
All the complaints I have have come from individuals who live next to a home that is being rented as a vacation rental.
Staff comments?
No staff, um...
Yeah, I have one comment. This evening, you received a packet for our Monday night meeting for a special zoning code update. In that packet is the matrix, and within, this is your matrix, you don't need to pull it out right now, but I'd like you to review the matrix closely. We've included all the comments to date of the direction you've given us, and this will be the last meeting we have together before going to City Council to bring forward your ideas, and the matrix will be the tool that we utilize to share what we've heard from you. So, please review the matrix, and on Monday I'll be asking for feedback to ensure that we've captured your ideas clearly. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Okay, moving to the consent calendar, there are two, sorry, approval of the minutes for the June 4th meeting.
I move to go ahead and approve them as written.
Oh, second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Minutes approved. Moving now to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on either of the items on tonight's consent calendar unless someone from the public or one of the commissioners wishes to pull one of those items for discussion. Are there any items that anyone from the public would like to pull? The two items we have tonight are 1801 42nd Avenue, which is a design permit for an addition to an existing residence located in the single-family residential zoning district, and item number two is 410 Bay Avenue, a design permit to build a new 2,894-square-foot home on a vacant lot located in the multifamily medium-density zoning district. Anyone from the public like to pull and discuss either of those items? Seeing none, is there a Commissioner that would like to pull either item for discussion?
I have a question about 1801 42nd Avenue, which we might be able to get answered, and then it could stay on the consent calendar, if that's okay? My question was related to the parking area, which they show on the plan in front of the house. I couldn't find where it indicated on the plan what material. Is it just going to be the existing dirt parking places that are there, or are they planning on doing asphalt, concrete, or?
I represent the rather one of the owners of the property. What we intend to do is to use the broken-up concrete from a concrete deck where the new floor is going to be constructed, and use that as paving stones. We also have rock that we'd like to place down and fill all the gaps with sand or crushed rubble.
Okay. So, I want to add a condition about the driveway.
Do we, do we want to go ahead and pull this one and have a quick discussion? And do away with the rest of the item on consent?
I would leave that to the Chair's discretion, but I think it would be perfectly appropriate if you wanted to add a condition about the driveway without pulling it off if...
I just want to say that they submit a driveway plan to the staff for their approval before permits are issued, since it's not indicated on our plans what the materials are going to be.
Does any Commissioner have an issue with that? Okay.
I have a comment on that same item, also not wanting to take it from the consent agenda, but I wanted to point out to the Commissioners that that is, this is one of two items on our agenda tonight that has the non-conforming use calculation, in terms of whether or not improvements to an existing non-conforming use require that the non-conforming use be mitigated, and so you should take, we should all take a look at the calculations, because that's coming up Monday as one of our items, and you'll see it's a very, very liberal standard that they're using now, and something we'll want to discuss.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from item B. My business is within 500 feet of the application property.
Okay.
So, do we want to make, I'll make a motion to approve, do we want to do item A first?
I think if we just do them both, then she abstains from the vote on the second item, that works.
Okay. I'll move the consent calendar.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I abstain from B.
Moving on to the public hearings, the first public hearing we have this evening is for 616 Sunset Drive, a design permit for a second-story addition, and a variance request to the parking requirement for a home located in the single-family residential zoning district. The way that the public hearings will work, this evening we'll have a staff presentation. After the staff presentation is completed, the Commissioners will ask questions that we might have of staff, and then we'll open it up for the public to make your comments on the item as we go through it. Once the public has had an opportunity to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission where we'll have our discussion and make our decision. Staff report on Sunset, please, Katie.
I'll actually be taking this one. Good evening, Commissioners. Before I use an application for a design permit to construct a 399-square-foot second-story addition to an existing single-story home located at 616 Sunset, and a variance request to the parking standards. The proposed project is located at 616 Sunset Drive, just east of SoCal Creek in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Subject lot is surrounded immediately by R1 zoning. The properties in this neighborhood are characterized by having small and rather shallow lots. The subject property contains an existing one-story, 1,192-square-foot home. The existing home contains two bedrooms, two baths, a family room, kitchen area, and a single-car garage. The existing home is setback just 10 feet from the front property line and is thus non-conforming to both the setback and the parking standards. The applicant is proposing to add a 399-square-foot second-story addition to the existing home, shown on the right. The second-story addition will contain a master bedroom, master bathroom, second bedroom, and a 132-square-foot second-story deck area. It's highlighted in blue. According to the code, deck area on the second floor, which constitutes less than 150 square feet, is not calculated as a part of the total allowable floor area ratio. The applicant also obtained a signed letter from the neighbor to the south stating that they are in support of the proposal. This slide shows the proposed finished home, as well as the existing home in the top-right corner. The finished home will contain gray-colored battening board siding for the gables, tan-colored stucco finishing for the exterior walls, and a rock accent running through the bottom of the home on the front elevation. The existing home does not meet current setback standards. Both the front yard and side yard setbacks are non-conforming. The existing front yard setback is only 10 feet. 20 feet are required, sorry, the existing front yard setback to the garage is only 10 feet, 20 are required, and the existing setback to the home is 12 feet, where 15 are required. In addition, the existing south-side wall is setback at 3'8", and 4 feet are required. The existing home does not comply with parking standards. The existing 1,192-square-foot home only contains one covered parking space within the garage. The code requires two spaces for this size of home, one covered and one uncovered. The driveway leading to the garage is 10 foot deep and does not comply with the required 20-foot depth for an uncovered parking space. The applicant is requesting a variance due to the small and shallow nature of the lot, as well as the location of the existing home on the subject lot. The applicant would like to leave the existing home where it is and build on top of it. Being that the existing home is only setback 10 feet from the front yard property line, it is difficult to find a location for the second required parking space, and thus the applicant is requesting a variance to the parking requirement. Planning Commission can grant a variance when it finds that because of a special circumstance, the strict application of the code is found to deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by others in that vicinity, and that the grant of a variance would not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with other properties in the vicinity. So, to further analyze whether or not the grant of a variance would constitute as a special privilege, staff conducted a site visit and researched previous applications in the neighborhood relevant to parking. Homes in this neighborhood, Sunset Drive, Beverly Avenue, Gilroy Drive, et cetera, generally contain small front yards and shallow driveways compared to the other single-family properties in the city. This trend has resulted in the high demand for on-street parking spaces in this neighborhood. The homes in this area that do not comply with parking standards are generally older homes that have not been remodeled prior to adoption of the current zoning code and parking standards. Of the 39 homes within this block, three of the homes were originally built with no parking and depend solely on on-street parking. Each of these homes is a single-story, and if they were to ever go about a significant remodel, they'd be required to bring parking into compliance. Within the past 30 years, 11 structures along this block have been remodeled or demolished and built new, and each project was required to comply with the parking requirement at the time of submittal. Here is an image taken today, actually, showing parking conditions in front of the subject property. The existing 10-foot driveway is unused, and thus cars are parking along the street. Staff also researched the broader neighborhood, including Sunset, Oak, Gilroy, and Center Street, and found four previous design permit applications requesting a variance within the past five years, and each of these, the variance request was for the parking requirement. Of these four variance applications, three were approved. Of those three, two of them, 619 and 522 Gilroy Street, were granted a reduction to the parking code in place at that time, but are now in compliance with the current parking code when it was last updated. The other property, 504 Oak Street, which is seen in the image at the bottom, is located on just a 20-foot-wide lot, and thus Planning Commission was able to grant a variance for that one. The one variance that was denied, 526 Oak Street, was for a demo and construction of an entirely new home, so Planning Commission and City Council recommended that they go back and redesign the home to meet current parking standards. Here you can see the immediate surrounding properties on Sunset that recently went through a remodel. These properties were required to meet parking standards, and as you can see, they have full-size And here are four more additional homes, all on that block on Sunset Drive. This slide shows properties in the neighborhood with substandard driveways, and how it affects the surrounding neighborhood. Based on staff's analysis of the neighboring properties, staff cannot make findings for approval of the variance to parking. The finding that 11 properties along the same block have been remodeled and comply with parking does not support a variance at this location. Furthermore, allowing a variance to reduce the requirement to one parking space will result in additional vehicles parking on Sunset and further perpetuate the parking problem in this neighborhood. Staff is unable to find any special circumstances which would deprive the property owner of privileges currently enjoyed by others in the same area. The applicant included an alternative to parking if the variance was denied. The site plan shows a single 10-by-20 uncovered parking space located perpendicular to the garage. Staff has concerns with this proposal alternative because the design is impractical and would disrupt the front yard aesthetic along the street and sidewalk. As an alternative, staff recommends that the applicant redesign the first floor by pushing the garage towards the rear of the property and either creating a two-car garage or a garage and full-size uncovered parking space in tandem. Based on the findings and the evidence presented, staff recommends denial of the variance and thus denial of application 1560.
Thank you, Brian. Questions of staff?
I may have misheard, but I think at the beginning of your presentation, you said the second floor contained a bedroom, but it contains two bedrooms, which makes this a four-bedroom home.
I want to commend staff on the background work that you did. It really helps, and I know how much time that takes, you know, with applications that weren't put into a system that they are now, so, thank you.
Other questions, comments for staff? I have, I have one comment, and I pointed this out earlier, and Brian's going to go check it out, but the items at 619 Gilroy, I think there was a typo. I think that the variance approved a shorter, a 17-foot, 6-inch parking space instead of taking it from three to two, because I think there was only a requirement for that size home in 2005 for two spaces and not the three, which makes this a really different situation than that unit. And the other comment that I had was, lost. It'll come back to me. With that, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is John Fleck. I'm at 623 Gilroy Drive and in the Riverview Terrace area. I am supportive of this variance for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's not a full and complete remodel, it's within the existing footprint of the home. We understand the parking situation, but previous variances were granted for the right reasons, and I think that is consistent with this application, so, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Ortiz just reminded me, is the applicant present? Would the applicant like to speak? I apologize.
My name is Troy Kaiser with HRI Construction, and I'm the contractor doing the design bill.
Thank you. I'm Caesar Castillo. I'm the owner, five years.
Welcome, Caesar.
Born and raised in Santa Cruz.
So, obviously, this is a very challenging project. You know, I've worked with this, with Ryan, for several months now, and I think the, originally we just wanted to add some square footage on the second floor, but just finding out that a lot of the setbacks and non-compliant brought up a lot of issues. We didn't really want to change much of the existing home, just, you know, economically, just adding some square footage on the second floor, that's what he wanted. We did try to come up with some alternative parking, maybe pushing the main house back, but it was just going to affect the design too much. Also, the, I think it's called 80% rebuild, brought up some factors where it was almost like, if you do all the math and the calculations, you would end up with like a 200-square-foot addition or some, it just didn't really make a lot of sense. So, I think there are some other homes on the street. I took some pictures of it tonight. I think 706 Sunset is one. It's got recently remodeled, it looks like, with a second story, and it looks like it's only maybe a 12-foot-deep driveway, if I'm not mistaken. And obviously, the codes have really changed in the, over the years. You can see the house right next door, it looks like a pretty large house. Obviously, the, the, the parking is compliant, but, you know, the square footage is obviously the issue, the FAR, that we're dealing with, so hopefully that...
Yeah. I just want to add, you know, I bought this house five years ago, and my family's growing. I have two kids right now, and it will be a four-bedroom house, but not really. It's a bedroom that's really small, it's 400 square feet, for $399, but it's really going to be a nursery for my next baby and my office when my kids leave, so it's really not a... my next baby and my office when my kids leave, so it's really not a four-bedroom house. I'm not selling this house. I was born and raised, and, you know, I went to Chuck E. Cheese, you know, all these places. I'm a physician down the street. I'm not going anywhere, so if you guys would grant this, it'd be great, so.
One other thing I wanted to add is, I think Ryan had said, like, that it, I forgot the word you used, but it would add more additional parking, I think. They already have two vehicles right now, so they're not going to get, like, additional vehicles, so the parking situation's not going to change. It's going to be the way it is right now, which is his vehicle and then the, his wife's vehicle, so, which his vehicle's parked in the garage right now, and the other one's right in front of the house.
Questions of the applicant?
I just had one. In looking on the plans for your new house, I didn't notice that you had any place for, like, a washer or dryer or a water heater, so I assume all of those are going to stay in the existing garage space that you have?
Well, actually, we're going to probably go to a tankless water heater, which will be on the exterior.
Right.
And probably go to a stackable washer and dryer.
And solar panel in the backyard has artificial turf.
It doesn't indicate that there's a place for that on the plans.
As far as the tankless, you mean?
No, for the washer and dryer.
Washer and dryer, yeah. We can probably use, like, one of the closets. I think there's one, and we can put that in there.
Other questions of the applicant?
But the front of your house is beautiful.
Thank you. We want to keep it that way. We don't want to change it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this item?
Hello. My name is Kate Arietta. I live in Capitola. It's a perfect time to fix some of the parking problems in town. Excellent neighbors. I don't want to, you know, I have no problem with my neighbors, but one house up from them, I have been, they have been, they have no off-street parking whatsoever, and they have been parking in my driveway for several years, probably almost ten years now, because of the parking problem down there. I think that where they are now, their driveway, like they said, ten feet, they can't not park a car in their driveway with their garage door closed and not block the sidewalk. It's a perfect time to help with the parking problems on Sunset. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Anybody have any comments?
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I think we should give them at least some idea of reasons for our thinking if that is going to be the motion. I mean, you make the motion, then we can discuss it, I guess.
Sure. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion?
And I'm happy to state my reasons for it. I think one of our goals is to not make situations worse in Capitola, and I think there is a significant parking problem in that area. We went through this and talking about revising our zoning ordinance and said we felt it was important for remodels to provide adequate parking, and I'd like to see that happen in this case.
I took a pretty close look at the neighborhood there. The day I went there, it happened to not be too impacted, but that might have just been that day. But what I did notice that kind of influenced me was that the shallow driveways, which are many like this house, were all single-story houses. All the new two-story houses had deeper driveways and adequate parking, so if we allow a two-story four-bedroom or maybe not be used for four bedrooms, if we're going to allow this kind of intensification of the use for this property, then there are a lot more coming behind it that could expect the same thing, and I think then it really will become a problem on that street.
I do have one comment about it, and that is, I've sat on this commission for many, many years, and I know a lot of people feel that they're going to be living in a certain house for many, many years, and things do change, and what we notice is that people, you know, end up moving in another five years or whatever, you know, maybe another maybe comes along and someone else comes in, so that's why we need to take a look at the application, not the applicant, not the family of the applicant. It has nothing to do with you. It has to do with Capitola community and the actual application, so, you know, somebody else is going to own that house someday, and who knows how many people they'll want in there, and so just wanted to bring up that too.
Yeah, and Mr. Castillo, I mean, I find your very compelling story about you being here and your family being raised here, and I certainly understand, I'm very empathetic. I lived in that neighborhood, and it cost me a lot of money to get a house the size my wife would like to live in, so, but I also understand that, you know, this whole precedent thing has nothing really to do with you, but in your neighborhood, that whole Riverview District is such a tight area that, you know, to me, it'd be setting a precedence, and we know that we have to somehow take a stand on this parking issue, and that's why we have the ordinance in place, so with that, I'd have to support our staff's recommendation.
And I too am going to chime in and ditto everything that's been said here. I spent a lot of time looking at the variances that had been provided in the past and the reasoning given when they were denied, and with all due respect to the gentleman who spoke earlier, the closest one I could find was the one on Gilroy. And when I researched it deeper, the requirement for two spaces wasn't violated. It was the length from seventeen feet, six inches to the eighteen-foot requirement for the length of that parking space that we offered a variance on. And so I Googled around and found that the average car length is fourteen feet, so if you've only got ten feet, you're going to be into that sidewalk regardless, unless you get a Smart Car, which I think is the shortest car on the planet. And people remodel, but once they remodel a house like that, they keep it for years and years and years, and you never know who's going to be living in it ten years from now, and the parking problem is bad now, and it just gets worse if we don't stop and kind of put our foot down and go back. So I would suggest that maybe you go back and look and see if there's any way to go out the back of the house into that backyard a little bit and give yourself the parking space that you need to get two cars. With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passed. Moving to the next item, eighteen fifty-five Forty-first Avenue, Unit E1. Staff report, please.
Okay. Thank you. This application is for a design permit and a sign permit at eighteen fifty-five Forty-first Avenue on the front facade of the Capitola Mall. The site was formerly a Carl's Jr. restaurant. The new tenant moving into the site is Five Guys Restaurant. The site is located in the community commercial zoning district. This is an image of the building as it exists today. The Carl's Jr. space is now vacant, and the Five Guys Burger and Fries are planning to move into the space. The Carl's Jr. space will be divided into two sections. Five Guys is leasing the space on the left, and a future tenant will rent the space between the Five Guys and the Starbucks. This image shows the three tenant spaces side by side. As you can see, the Starbucks coffee facade includes increased transparency with taller windows and a glass door. It also has a unique patina-colored finish. There is some relief in the design with the front windows and entry coming approximately one foot off the front elevation. This is an image of the front facade looking north. The sidewalk in front of the mall is quite wide. This walkway will be upgraded to comply with accessibility requirements during the remodel. This image shows the proposed remodel and sign. The existing doors and windows will be replaced with new glass and aluminum storefront system, providing greater transparency. Also, the awning on the left side will be replaced with a new awning that has more vertical emphasis. The exterior finish of the building will remain stucco. The applicant plans to patch and repair any of the damaged stucco and paint the finish to match existing. This is the side elevation of the building as proposed within the remodel. No real changes are proposed to this elevation other than also upgrading the stucco and repainting the surface to match. The applicant is also requesting approval of a wall sign. The wall sign will be internally illuminated, white plex channel letters attached to a red aluminum backing. The red aluminum backing will be attached to the stucco wall. The proposed sign is thirty square feet and complies with the development standards for a wall sign. In reviewing a design permit, the Planning Commission may consider the architectural character and compatibility of projects. The mall is located on Forty-first Avenue and is subject to the Forty-first Avenue Design Guidelines. One guideline that pertains to the project is guideline number eight. Guideline number eight suggests that projects in a single large structure, such as the mall, should provide variety in building shape, height, roof lines, and setbacks, and it also specifies that buildings should provide variety and interest. I wanted to give you a couple of recent applicants that have come through from the mall. There are two. The first one is the upgrade was Alta Beauty. This photo shows the new panel finish system, the canopy sign, and landscaping. This remodel better define the new retail store from the outside. This is a new design trend for malls, to not only create character and experience from within the mall, but also to define the store and draw customers from outside the mall. Next is the Chili's Restaurant, which was recently upgraded as well. The Chili's Restaurant incorporated a new panel wall system, a canopy, and a new sign. The new facade materials extend from the entrance and then wrap the corner of the building, creating a finished look. That's the stucco panel system that you see there. So staff recommends approval of the design permit and sign permit for the new Five Guys Restaurant, application fifteen zero nine six. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak?
Yeah, but.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Comments? Anybody?
Well, I'm a little concerned about the simplicity of the design of the facade while looking at if we can go back to Alta and Chili's. They've put a lot of thought and money into these facades, and Forty-first, we're trying to make Forty-first Avenue more appealing, more walkable, more attractive, and I'd like to see it look more, I mean, something like this looks like it's, it could be somewhere on a small street in Los Gatos or Berkeley, any small town where you see a lot on a small street, a small retail street, you see several different types of buildings and different facades, and it gives it this individual, more owned by an owner-operator, a personal touch to it, and I'm not seeing that so much in the drawings, in the illustrations that we were given tonight. Is there my comment?
So just.
Hold on just a second. I see a member of the public standing. We closed the public hearing, and you didn't.
I'm Mary Ann Millar. I'm from the Capitola Mall. I represent Mace Ridge, the mall owner, and I'd like to talk about our sign criteria.
Okay. I would like to hear that. Please approach.
I didn't mean to do it that much fashion.
That's all right.
Thanks, Gil, for your concern, and yes, we have a big concern about that, and again, I'll repeat my name. I'm Mary Ann Millar. I'm the senior property manager for Capitola Mall. Met many of you before. I don't, I think one of the images Katie has seen, but maybe we talked about in sign criteria, is our plan for the front of the mall, and so while this particular sign at this point in time seems a little simple, it's really not in our overall plan. We were not ready to submit a general sign criteria plan at the time of Five Guys' submittal. If you look at this plan, part of the problem is subdividing the old Carl's Jr. space. We are now trying to put two very prominent spaces with prominent signs in this location that was once one. And in this picture, you'll see that Starbucks will be shortly coming to us for a remodel, and their sign will change, and if you look at the kind of juice bar we put in between, we do intend to keep the front of the mall a little different and a little more interesting. And one of the things that's not in the current plan with Five Guys, we, Katie mentioned the great section that we have for some exterior seating. We would still like to venture out into that a little bit longer, and maybe that will come with the Starbucks remodel. We do have space for outdoor seating there, and that is something we would like to incorporate, and that goes way back to the general plan with us redoing the whole main entrance. That still is Mace Ridge's focus. Mace Ridge really would like to keep this sign in the city criteria currently until we are ready to submit an overall sign criteria for the front of the mall, but we don't want to encroach on that tenant that's now going in the middle, especially on the edge of Starbucks doing something different. Alta is exactly what we wanted, but it doesn't fit now trying to put these spaces a little different, so I would beg that you would look at what we envision the signs looking like in the future, based on what I handed you, and I do have an extra copy.
We have one.
There you go. Linda, if you want.
I don't think we do have an extra one.
Sharon does. We saw it. So can I ask staff a question, just so I'm clear? On the plans which you gave to us, this smaller red awning is leftover from it being Carl's Jr.'s?
It is.
And so this space is going to get redone with the new tenant, and this one is the Five Guys new side over here.
Yes.
So when we look at it and we look at their application, we really should sort of fold the page and just look at this.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Well, I'm really glad that we got this additional information, because, I mean, my first reaction was very similar, that the Carl's Jr. facade seemed like about as bad as we could get. I didn't think we could get any worse, but then when I saw this plant.
You thought, oh, no.
I thought they met that standard, but now if you, now that I see what it really looks like, it looks a lot better. Thank you.
Well, so what I'm seeing that's different here is that that, I know it's the function of a flat drawing, this is going to be canted out similar to the Carl's Jr. now.
Right.
And I see a couple of plants out here that I didn't see on the plan, and I'm seeing different, it looks to me as though it's different windows on it. I mean, this doesn't look so bad or so simple, I should say, as what I saw in the plans. I'm seeing, you know, black in the plans, and I'm seeing white on the drawing, on the I still think it's simple. I mean, I still think it's very simple, and I guess I'm not really clear about, when you're saying, are you saying that this is a temporary awning and sign and that it will be changed when? No.
No, my apologies. The drawing that I'm giving you is an overview of what we originally started with. It is not necessarily perfect to what is being submitted today. I was trying to give you an overview of what the mall's expectations are for the frontage. We are going to come back and ask for the outdoor seating with the plants. That is not part of today's proposal, but as Katie mentioned, and they mentioned, there is room for that. The mall will be coming back to that when we come back to that second location. We will be asking for a little outdoor seating. We're not asking for that today, so my apologies. Yes, that drawing is a little more future, what we're going to be asking for. However, no, the sign as it exists and what we're asking for now and the awning as it exists, we will not be asking to change.
Okay. Thank you. One question. The current fence, it looks like a barrier fence between the bus stuff and the building. Is that your responsibility, and will that remain, or is that the tenant's responsibility?
That is considered common area, and it is our responsibility.
Okay. Will that barrier remain there then?
At this point in time, yes. When we come back at perhaps a future date to talk about some of that outdoor seating, because we do want to change that frontage, especially when we talk about connecting that road with the road with the bike path and all those other things we've always been talking about, yes, we will come back to you to talk about that railing. But as it stands today, as common area is my responsibility.
Okay. So question that I have for staff, when you say that they're going to make that more ADA compliant, what does that mean?
So the, the building official will send it out for an official review. I believe if Malav could speak to this because I know he's had conversations with the building official regarding what they'll need to do in order to make that ADA compliant.
So the, the portion of the mall where there's a slight slope is an ADA compliance portion of the sidewalk that is required to go to the bus stop. So we cannot touch that. That's the reason why it looks the way it is. We cannot touch it otherwise the entire mall will lose, the whole sidewalk will lose the ADA compliance. The ADA compliance that we are doing is for the side of the facade where we had to add a fire door required by the building department where we had to create a slope for ADA compliance. So because of the fire door requirement, we ended up with three doors in the space. Uh, but lot of, there are a lot of limitations of the building the way it is and signage criteria and the fire requirements. So that's why it's designed the way it is.
Thank you.
Do you off the top of your head know how far out the awning is going to extend from the building? I looked at the plans and I couldn't find that dimension.
Uh, I know the height. Uh, it's eight feet.
So. The bottom of the, uh, the awning is eight feet.
From the bottom to the top is eight feet.
Right, that, that, that looks correct.
But how far it sticks out from the building is what she's asking.
Right, I was asking how far it stuck out from the building.
As the height is eight feet.
Yeah.
I would estimate about three feet off the building based on dimensions that are.
I mean, I was, I was just wondering and I don't want to, if, if it was a little, if it, if it came out slightly more, it would seem like more of a feature on the building, particularly if you are thinking of coming back and, you know, wanting to have some, some outdoor seating. If it came off maybe five feet instead of three feet, uh, it would still be the same height.
If we ask for the out, when, when we get to ask for the outdoor seating, it would probably be a, a whole frontage remodel which all the awnings will then change because Chili's awning will also have to change. We've had some problems with the awnings and the fact that our security lighting tends to be under those awnings. And so we do have a requirement. I can assure you it will be no smaller than it stands today. Um, and yes, our future requirement if we do that for security reasons. Um, again, one is the lighting. If it's too close in, it blocks that lighting on the sidewalk.
Right.
And therefore our new CCTV cameras cannot see that. So I can assure you that Mace Ridge wouldn't approve something that made the lighting any less. Um, it is sad that the plans don't show how far, but as approved, we would never approve something and they are stamped and approved, um, anything smaller. But if outdoor seating came into a, a situation, we also have the ability to add the lighting from above because of the camera system. And so security on that section, especially at the front of the mall, is a big deal. And we went through that with the Chili's approval and their awning and their lighting. And we're still working with them that the awning is a little too dark and they have a pigeon fence underneath it which is blocking a little bit of lighting and we're currently working through that as well. So that is a huge concern of ours.
Right.
But I don't have that to mention on the plan, I'm sorry to say. I'd be happy to have that as a submittal.
Narrower, I was thinking of having it come out a little more.
Yeah, exactly.
Which seems like the lighting would be.
Understood. And I would be happy to have that back with that requirement. That's perfectly fine with me.
More comments, does anybody else have any comments?
No, go ahead. Charge forward, Gail.
All right, I'm going to keep charging forward then. Um, what I heard in the Forty First Avenue guidelines is variety and interest. And I feel like as proposed, this is lacking a little bit of interest and a little bit of detail, architectural detail, planting materials, facade, uh, you know, I, I see that Starbucks is looking at maybe putting something that looks like wood on the facade. I, I, I don't want to wait for a future date to do something because we all know that future dates seem to be more like five to seven years now and really we need, we need the mall to look good today. So I'm still advocating for, uh, I, I want this business, I think this business is going to be really good for the mall, really good for Capitola. I'm glad you're coming in. Thank you. And, um, so what I'd like to propose is that we allow the business to move forward with all of its building plans and do all that, but come back with a facade, a little bit of a facade upgrade and, and we just take a look at that because that'll be the last thing that gets done in the, in the, um, construction. Uh, if that's possible, that's what, that's what I'd like to see is a little bit more interest, a little more, a li- a little architectural element in there, a little bit of planting. Uh, I understand these are smaller facades, but that also happens on street fronts where little tiny, you know, the vill- look at the village, you know? So, um, I'd like to see a little more individualistic look to this particular shop and I think it will serve the business better in the long run as well. I'm a real big believer in, in catching people's eye from the front.
Mace Ridge would definitely entertain something again with the outdoor seating if you'd like to make that a recommendation and we can figure out exactly how to fit that and we fit it soon. Um, if you give us a little time, you know, give me till the end of the year, whatever it takes. Um, I can do the planting and the outdoor seating immediately based on ADA if I can get in and out of that door once it's built. Um, I'm more than happy to do that. Of course I want it to look like the other side. So I'm very much, we're, we're super excited to have you say that and we'd be very glad to do that. Um, you know, let's move forward with the building. The building's going to take a little time. Um, but you know, give me, you know, ninety days, whatever it takes.
Just as long as it's before the, the business opens.
Yeah.
As long as we can ha- you know, well before the business opens so we have a chance to review it.
I would be willing to take that back to Mace Ridge and ask for those recommendations and present something else to you.
So is Mace Ridge responsible for the facades of these, um, these, so that?
Everything outside of the tenant's face is our responsibility.
Okay.
So yes, it is. Um, but again, the railing and those types of things are going to take a little permitting time, but I can definitely come back to you with a plan before that time.
I, personally, I want to see before the doors are open, I want to see a better facade on this.
I'll do the best I can.
I know you will. But I don't even know if I have support, so I, you know, might, you might not have to.
Does, does the size of the awning for the Five Guys store change from the width of the awning that's existing there now?
It changes slightly because there will be two. Now you're getting two separate awnings as opposed to the Carl's Jr.'s two separate awnings, one is bigger than the left. The space has not been subdivided directly down the middle. The space on the right is quite a bit smaller. And again, that becomes the debate. How much do you give, no, no offense to Malav, to Five Guys, I have to have a space that's leasable in between.
So it's Mace Ridge that's deciding to split it into two and not that you got a tenant that only wants a smaller portion of it?
No, I wouldn't say that. I would say we are giving Five Guys because we want them and they want to be here and it's a great addition to Capitola, the space that they want.
Okay.
But that leaves me with a space that I'm doing the best I can to incorporate into something else. And it's a very small space, but I need to give it frontage in order to be able to lease it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? CJ? I have some comments then. I, like Commissioner Ortiz, am really looking for some architectural interest on the front of the mall. I mean, this is the main entrance to the mall and you've got a nice big rounded architectural feature that if you're facing it going on the right side, you've got a nice architectural feature on Chili's and I think Ulta did an awesome job with their architectural feature and it, it really upgraded, um, the look and feel of the mall. We've talked, um, going through the general plan process and for, seems like years now, about trying to upgrade the front of the mall and really bring the mall back to its, its days of vitality. And when I first looked at this, I thought, you know, Carl's Jr.'s been there for a long time and it is what it is, but bringing in a new tenant didn't step it up any. It sort of stepped it back a little bit. It looks to me like, more like a, a strip mall than an elegant feature to our mall. And I was hoping that we would have some kind of a plan from Mace Ridge, so I appreciate the fact that you're showing us this. But it doesn't include the other side and so it looks a little off balance to me. If Starbucks does what's presented here and it looks like, is the yogurt place that's in here just a kind of a placeholder for conceptual?
Um, yes, the answer is yes. Again, I'm doing, what we're going to do with that space is also going to be something equally as nice. You have to remember, we presented Ulta, we presented that frontage, we paid for that frontage. So Mace Ridge is very much committed to the Ulta deal and all of Chili's remodel. I mean, that is definitely the landlord's doing. Um, you know, we gave great concessions for both of that right side. So if you stand and look at the front of the mall and you say, I really like the right side, that's great because that's exactly where we're going. Um, to say that the Five Guys side will come out any less is probably not the case. It's just, I would say is not the case. Obviously we want the same thing. Um, we're trying to redo the front of the mall and as you know too, I'm working so hard with the transit district and trying everything we can to redo that frontage. It's very tough to get a tenant that's this great to take that location next to the bus with the bus unable to move. Um, and I don't think that the facade, we will let look any less. It is our intent to paint it to match the other side. It is the intent and, and that is a drawing. I don't think Starbucks necessarily will come back with the all wood. That is their current facade on other locations. We are in negotiations to present them a remodel which they are in negotiations with. I can't say any more than that. Will they come back with an all wood? I can't promise you that. Um, do I want the left side? Does Mace Ridge commit to the left side? Yes, we paid a lot to make the right side look that way. We are very committed to exactly what you're saying. So I'm sorry that the plan came across that it looks the same. I dislike the Carl's Jr. so much and their signage and their frontage. I'm very excited to have a brand new painting that matches the rest. We're committed to painting the whole front to match the same. Um, and if you look on some of those plans too, in that particular plan, the frontage is already still curved, but if you've seen many of our future plans in other elevations, you know, that is not the long-term goal of what the front will look like. It's no longer like that in many plans we've submitted to you. Mace Ridge is very committed to the front of the mall and although some things have been going slowly and I'm with you, I've been here a long time. We, we, we seem to move a little slow, um, but at least we're moving. So I, I don't know what else to tell you about that except we are committed to make it look like the right and that is our, my, my doing and our Mace Ridge's doing.
Okay, I, I, I just want to make certain I understand. So what I heard you say is that it would take you till the end of the year to come up with a plan for the outdoor seating and the plants and, and doing that improvement.
If you give, if you, if you do approve this on a conditional situation and you say, put the plants and the trees that are in the picture and, before they open, done. As long as I can get it within guidance and your ordinances with the railing, fine. If I have to rebuild that sidewalk because of the slope and because of the, um, grade, it is an eight percent grade there, if I have to do that, then I will not have time to do that before the holiday season and my back to school season. I can't tear up the front of my mall. I would ask for a little more time. Um, but if you're just asking for me to put, there is room, I'm almost positive and again, I'd have to go through commission for that. I'm pretty sure there's room for the seating. Um, Starbucks had some seating out there the other day and I went out, they just did it for the afternoon for a meeting. I measured it, it was plenty of room. Um, plants and pots, I could do it instantaneously. I could probably put a bench out there before they open as you're asking and make it match and be pretty, that's fine. But if you're asking me to redesign for outdoor seating, that's a lot, I don't know how far out of code we are. I don't know about that fence that I said I'm responsible for. I would ask for a little time to do that. And I would never want to hold up Five Guys opening for some outdoor seating. I'd rather promise to it after holiday is what I was trying to say.
I'd like to see outdoor seating there someday, but I see that as more problematic as far as, um, uh, doing it quickly. I see what you're saying and that's really not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for architectural detail, delineation. Um, I see that in almost every single one of these buildings, these storefronts except the Five Guys. I, I would like to see that same, you know, the, the recess or something that creates an architectural delineation and that softens the front of the facade just a little bit or the facade, the front of the building a little bit so that it creates a little bit of interest. Uh, and what, and I'm not telling you how to do it, I'm just saying that's what I think the mall deserves, that's what Forty First Avenue needs. And I think it would help all the businesses and I'd like to see that, a, a design for that, whatever you feel you can do, um, before they open. And my guess is they've got two to three months of construction to, ahead of them and I would imagine that something simple but tasteful with plantings and some architectural feature could get done prior to that and come back to us and, and be approved.
Again, I'm with you on the thought process. Um, we hope to have Five Guys open. We've already subdivided the space. We've, you know, let Carl's Jr. go, so it's been quite a while to wait to come here to present this deal. Um, it is not set back like Ulta is. It does not, um, give itself to those planters and the things that we did.
No, it doesn't to those. But that's why I'm saying I'm leaving it up to you and your designers to find a, a way around that because there is. With any facade, there's a way to soften it, make it more interesting, give it a little character, uh, given all constraints, whatever constraint you've got, you can always find a way.
Again, I'm back to what I've said already. The best thing I can do.
Madam Chair, I'm finding, we're going back and forth here and I don't think it's very productive.
No, no, no. That's all I can do.
I think we're past our productive point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't feel that way.
No, don't be sorry. I just think we're both saying the same thing.
Thank you.
Well, I, uh, for me, when I, I look at the drawing that they presented of the mall, um, you know, for Five Guys, it's the same as what they are proposing. Uh, I mean, there's nothing different between this drawing and this drawing except the plants out front and some chairs.
And different, which I don't think makes a difference, but there is different color, um, window treatment.
Right, so you're, the, the black anodized sort of window treatment is.
Is white in this photo, that's different.
It's white in, in this one.
That's not, that's not my point, you know, that's not what I'm so worried about. I'm just worried about the, the simplicity of the current design.
So I, and I mean, I, I've had some experience dealing with Mace Ridge and, and mall projects. I think anyone who's worked in the city of Capitola has and there's always a lot of promises and timeframes that never seem to come through. And, uh, I'm a bit concerned for the Five Guys that, you know, suddenly they're caught in, you know, a battle between the city and Mace Ridge which really has nothing to do with them and their operation. Um, so for me, I could come up with a solution where I could say, you know, go ahead with this and, you know, we will give you a conditional approval that's, you know, good for nine months, what it, whatever, in, with the expectation that the mall is going to come back and, and do something more. I just, I, I feel uncomfortable holding these guys up when, you know, what they're proposing is what is on this plan here.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to hold them up. I think I mentioned that. I, I don't want to hold them up. I think the mall can come up with something that can get accepted by us and built or at least in that process by the time they open that I think would be.
But you have to tie their occupancy rights to approving that new plan or else?
Well, all we're being asked. Well, all we're being asked-
It's meaningless.
All we're being asked, well-
You can't say we'll come back in nine months, what are you gonna do, shut down Five Guys now? That's never gonna happen.
Right, I-
I understand your concern, I think it is simplistic, although the Five Guys' marketing seems to be simplistic at all the places, so I'm encouraged to see Mace Ridge doing something with the mall, and I'm really encouraged to see a new occupant, a tenant in the mall. I'd hate to hold Five Guys up over something that they really have no control over. I think, you know, at least it is an upgrade, Carl's Jr. is gone, and at least we have a tenant there that has something going on. Mace Ridge is gonna be an ongoing, it's a work in progress, I guess, with us and the city and Mace Ridge. So, for me, I could propose a motion that we approve it as staff has recommended on this one, and then continue with Mace Ridge, so hopefully they come through and do some upgrades to the side of the mall.
I think I could probably support that, 'cause I agree with Commissioner Westman that we, I can't see us holding them up to go back and forth, but I don't think there are two or three months left of construction. I think they'll probably be in faster than we could turn a new plan for the Five Guys. I think that would, that would tangle them up and delay them. I think the message is delivered that what we really wanna see is something different than even this picture for the new ones coming up. And the outdoor seating, if we can put that and the discussion about, you know, what it's gonna take to get that kind of interest going on the front of the mall, if we can expedite that, then I think we've got a win-win.
I heard the mall representative say that plants could go out, you know, like pots can go out there right now, if I don't have any support for anything more, I would at least like to see pots go out there now, and a bench, I think she mentioned a bench, and just say that I regret that I don't have support for this, because I know that this, the mall's timeline on this is contingent upon moving the bus stop, and I know how long that's gonna take. So we are gonna be, whatever we approve tonight, we're gonna be looking at for at least another five years and possibly ten. That's what I think, and so-
Hold on a second, Katie has-
Madam Chair, so, this is a unique situation that we're meeting mid-month of July, and our next regular plans meeting for, is for the first Thursday in August, which is only three weeks away. If you wanted to approve of the, like, new windows and doors and the sign, but ask for further details at our following meeting of, if you'd like different exterior materials on the outside, I don't know if that is something the applicant could work with-
I would like to ask if there are different facades for different storefront, different stores for Five Guys. I mean, are they all absolutely identical, or are they like Orchard, where they vary slightly and, you know?
So, typically, Five Guys has about thirteen, thirteen hundred stores across the country, thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred stores. They mostly focus on excellence in service. When you come inside, you'll feel the difference in what we do. Outside is not a primary focus for Five Guys. We do our best to make it as good as we can. In this scenario, all the shops are different, so the middle shop, we don't know what they're gonna do, Starbucks, we don't know what they're gonna do. So we didn't want to design a facade which is, which looks even ugly when it's done by itself. So we proposed to mall that if, the mall wants to do the whole side, you know, we will work with them, design the whole section, Starbucks all the way to the end. That's one. Second is, we are a small business, we are not Ulta, Ulta is a publicly traded company. We are not Starbucks, Starbucks is a publicly traded company. We are already paying rent on this space. We cannot afford to wait. We are very small.
I don't think anybody's asking you to wait. I have not heard that from one person up here.
Okay.
So, you're cool about that, you're gonna open the day you wanna open, I'm sure of it.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion in a second, or did we just-
I heard a motion-
I said I would propose one, but I didn't actually do it, so, but I would make a motion that we-
Can I ask you one thing first before you make your motion? I think Katie came up with a good solution, and that is that, you know, clearly, some of us are not comfortable with sort of the drawings and the information that we have about how it's gonna be painted, what it's gonna be looked like, can there be plants and benches. So, we could approve, as she said, the new doors and windows, and continue the other exterior improvements for them to come back. They can come back in three weeks, which shouldn't, you know, be a hindrance as far as your timeline is concerned, and, you know, provide a bit more detail about what they're proposing to do. You know, I go back to my suggestion of looking at just extending the awning out a little further, so it becomes more substantial, um-
Planting, a bench maybe, yeah.
The planting, the bench, you know, some of those kinds of things.
Yeah, painting that band.
Would that work for you, TJ?
I have a question about where you're going, would they be able to go get a building permit tomorrow?
They would be able to go get a building permit tomorrow to start on the-
No, we cannot. We've been waiting for this meeting to get the building permit.
The appeal period would begin tomorrow, in ten working days, they'd be able to-
So they would have a building permit before we would review the facade, and if we didn't come to some agreement with it.
You know, I would say, based on what the mall and the tenants have done on the right side, I would trust the mall to do the right thing and do something that's attractive. If we said we wanted them to add a deeper awning, a bench, and some planting materials, and leave them-
And paint the band.
Leave it to them to do it.
Okay, that works for me.
How's that sound? How's that sound?
And paint the band, so the wall's all the same color like it is in this picture.
Yep.
Okay, I think we did it.
Okay, you wanna make that motion?
Let you make the motion.
Go for that one.
Okay, I move that we approve the design permit for the exterior modifications and sign permit for new Five Guys restaurant, adding to the conditions that they add a deeper awning that is appropriate for the mall's security system and the tenant, and that they add plant materials out in front, and that they add a bench out in front.
And that they paint the band.
And that they paint the band.
The wall.
Paint the band to be one color.
Right, so it's all one, the wall is all one color, as it is in-
Yeah, I think they-
This picture, but not in the plan.
I think they actually said that down here, so. Okay, there's my motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimously passed.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. And for our final public hearing this evening, we have a housing element update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As most of you know, the housing element is one of our seven mandated general plan elements. However, unlike the other six elements, the housing element update is required to be updated on regular intervals as established by the state of California. And also, the housing element has to be certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Capitola's current housing element was adopted in February 2010, certified by HCD a few months later, and our current deadline to update the housing element is December 31st, 2015, although we do have 120 days after that, a sort of a grace period. Nonetheless, we think we're on track to get it done on time. There have been some significant legislative and policy changes since our last housing element update, notably Senate Bill 375 was passed in 2008. This did most jurisdictions a favor by extending the housing element update cycle from four to eight years. However, it did impose a penalty that if you didn't update your housing element on time, that you'd be subjected to abbreviated four-year update cycles. 2011, as we all know, redevelopment was terminated, and the big effect related to the housing element was it eliminated our primary funding source for our affordable housing programs. Since then, we've been patching together little bits of money here and there to keep things moving, but they're not funded nearly as well as they were when redevelopment was still in place. And then finally, HCD developed a streamlined update process a couple of years ago. Capitola's fortunate to qualify for it by virtue of having a certified housing element and completing required housing element programs. Essentially, it allows for a focused rather than a comprehensive update, and you can just do the updates in a strikeout, underlined format, which you've seen in the copies that you have, rather than writing a whole new document. Unlike the legislative changes, not been a lot of change in Capitola's housing condition and the housing stock, it's been relatively stable. Over the last seven years, we've seen approximately ninety-eight new or replacement homes constructed. Of those, most of them are above moderate income. We did have thirteen very low-income units constructed, the Bay Avenue senior apartments, and some moderate-income units at the Capitola Beach Villas, as well as a couple secondary dwelling units. So the regional housing needs assessment is the process that drives most of the housing elements. As you probably recall from previous housing element experiences, the state requires cities and counties to plan for our fair share of regional housing. That's set by the state and then distributed to local jurisdictions in our region by AMBAG. The good news is, is that today's RENA requirement for the city of Capitola is exactly the same as it was in the previous housing element, one hundred and forty-three units. So of our opportunity sites that we had from the last housing element, we have, we had a total of one hundred and fifty-two unit capacity identified. That is still adequate to meet our new one hundred and forty-three unit RENA requirement, so there's no requirement to rezone properties or establish affordable housing overlays, makes the process much easier. There's not a lot of key changes in this housing element, but I'll go through very quickly some of the things that are changing. We are updating our demographic information based on census information. We're gonna update the housing information to show completed and pending projects, and there'll also be an updated housing constraints analysis to show some of the housing-related ordinances the city has adopted or modified since the last update, things like emergency shelters, transitional supportive housing, reasonable accommodation. And then there will be an evaluation of how we did with our 2007 and 2014 housing element. There are two semi-substantial program changes that are proposed, the first being elimination of all programs and policies pertaining to rent control, which as you know is repealed in 2011, we'll be removing those. And then secondarily, there has been a privately initiated request to eliminate or modify the condo conversion policy that's currently in the housing element. So the condo conversion policy is a housing element program 2.4. It requires the city maintain and enforce its existing condo conversion ordinance with the intent of preserving rental housing. The condo conversion ordinance resides in our subdivision ordinance of municipal code and prohibits condo conversions of apartment buildings with five or more units which were built prior to 1970 or after 1979. And lastly, it does require that any condo conversions dedicate onsite inclusionary affordable units and pay inclusionary housing fees. If the city council ultimately chose to remove or modify the housing element program for the housing element, it would have no effect on the ordinance itself. The private application was submitted in 2012 for a conceptual review by the owners of the Antigua and Crest Apartments. They requested that the ordinance be amended to allow them to convert to condominiums. That request, though, however, also triggered general plan, the housing element amendment, and an LCP amendment, because our subdivision ordinance is a part of our local coastal program. The city council ultimately declined that request and directed applicants to wait until the general plan and housing element updates had been completed. The Antigua apartments have submitted an application last March to do a condominium conversion ordinance amendment. The housing ordinance amendment to waive the requirements for onsite affordable units was also part of the request. And since that time, we've learned from the coastal commission that they expect any of these projects that are near the bluffs to demonstrate a minimum seventy-five-year life without using any seawalls or protective features, and this application currently remains incomplete. That's all to say that the project itself still has a long road to hoe, but this would be one significant obstacle removed for them should they decide to go forward with their project. So the next steps for the housing element is, next Thursday, we're gonna present to the city council and ask them to allow us to refer the housing element to HCD and initiate public review. If that request is granted, we'll refer it to HCD for a sixty-day public review period, at which time we'll concurrently allow public review and comment. We anticipate adoption hearings would occur in October and November of this year, and by January or February of the new year, we'd receive HCD certification. So staff recommends that the planning commission recommend the city council authorize staff to refer the housing element to HCD and initiate public review. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, any questions for staff? Commissioner Newman?
So, one of my first impressions when I hear this is that the timing is very tricky, because we're in the ordinance development process right now, and a lot of the provisions deal with the existing ordinance, and we're talking about changing those ordinances, for example, secondary units, that's one of the, and we just discussed that, like, last meeting. So, how do we move forward with this housing element based on ordinances that are just about to get changed?
So, when I reviewed the housing element, I didn't see any programs or policies aside from the ones that were highlighted in the presentation that would be affected or would become, I don't think there's anything that would be affected or that would no longer be enforced through the discussions we've had. For instance, there's nothing to say that, there's a lot of things they consider, for example, increasing secondary dwelling units, but it doesn't require us to do it. So if we go through the process and say, "Well, we considered it and chose not to do it," I think we're still in compliance with the housing element.
We just have to plan for these things, we don't have to do them.
Correct, that's right.
Well, to me, it seems that maybe I'm, you know, missing something here, but a little bit of a conflict, so, we did discuss approving the secondary dwelling units would give us more rentable properties, but at the same time, the condo conversion, we're holding off because we need rentable properties, so how does that timing play out on the, and we also now have this timeline of these homes that have become single-family dwellings in these areas that, I think, the Antigua falls into one of those areas.
So, that's a privately initiated request, it's a private application, should they choose to move forward, they can certainly do so, if they'd like to amend the other ordinances, the housing ordinance, subdivision ordinance, the LCP, but that would be at their time and expense. It's not in the zoning ordinance, is-
I understand what you're saying, but it seems like we have to change some of those things anyway, based on some of these other zoning changes we're making.
At least as it relates to condominiums, I don't think there's anything that would require us to change that unless we chose to do so, because I think it's a good idea.
So, what I understand tonight is that you want us to, you know, recommend this going forward for public review, and there are a couple things in it that, you know, I think need to be changed if, you know, you want my support for doing that. So, I assume this is the appropriate time to talk about that. And the first one's really fairly simple, in chapter six on page six, we have a program 1.4A which deals with review development regulations. And if you look at the bullet points, the second one down, this one says, you know, allowed for shared parking for mixed-use developments. And we had quite a discussion about the problems of having retail and housing together and how there's often a conflict there. So, I would simply like to see us change that language and say, "Considered shared parking for mixed-use developments," because I think for each one, we're gonna have to look carefully at how that particular project is going to work within itself. And the other issue that I was concerned about was the condominium conversion ordinance, because while I do think the city needs to look at revising that condominium conversion ordinance, I think the requirement in there for, you know, no units built prior to January 1, 1970 are- one nineteen seventy or after nineteen seventy-nine is a little arbitrary. I think there's some projects that we might want to consider that were built in that timeframe, but I absolutely think the city wants to have a condominium conversion ordinance because that's one of the things that has provided the rental housing stock that we have in Capitola because over the years, there've been lots of requests to change apartments to condominiums. And I think we need to make certain that we have an ordinance that deals with the people who are current renters and living there, how they will be dealt with, which our current ordinance does. I think we need to have some provision for some sort of inclusionary housing, you know, whether it's in the units themselves or it's some other housing that's provided to replace what's being lost. So, I'm not comfortable just eliminating the whole condominium conversion ordinance. I would like to see some more sort of generic language that whatever condominium conversion ordinance the city comes up with will be enforced as part of trying to maintain some of the rental housing stock that we have. And, you know, I don't know what the exact wording should be, but just to eliminate it completely, I don't think is appropriate.
Question of clarification for Commissioner Westman. It was my understanding, and I don't really understand everything about how all of this works, but it was my understanding that removing it from the housing element has no impact on the ordinance itself. The ordinance itself stands, and the only difference is that if we want to allow a conversion in the future, that the process would be shortened by the amount of time that it takes to amend the housing element. Is that not really the case?
Well, for me, I think we...I would like to see our housing element have in it programs to preserve the rental housing stock that we have in Capitola. I think that's an important part of any housing element in a community to try and preserve that. I mean, that's what makes up our community. So, I would want to keep in our housing element something that, you know, talks about that we're going to enforce whatever condominium conversion ordinance the city has. That doesn't mean that the city can't amend its current condominium conversion ordinance, and I think that's where the changes should take place, not taking it out of our housing element because it's an important housing program.
So, why isn't this part of our ordinance issues discussion?
Well, as you know, the municipal code is eighteen chapters. The zoning code is chapter seventeen, and this resides in an entirely different chapter. And in my opinion, every chapter needs to be updated. So, it's a matter of, you know, just kind of workload resources, priorities.
Because, I mean, that's really what I think you're saying is we really...and I agree that it's not like the dates that seem very arbitrary. This was really a project-specific ordinance.
Yeah.
And the Los Flores Apartments were built in, I forget whatever they fit within this. And so, this was...this ordinance was created to convert the Los Flores Apartments and not convert anything else. So, it would look okay to convert the Los Flores Apartments, the Villas of Capitola.
Right. So, as I said, I think it's the ordinance that needs to be rewritten, not that a condominium conversion ordinance is not going to be a part of our overall housing plan. And, you know, I would be comfortable leaving it up to staff to sort of figure out the exact wording that they want to have in there.
I think we could accomplish that relatively easily. If you read the program as it's written today in the housing element, it's almost verbatim for what the ordinance says. I think it'd be easy to generalize that, say, enforce a condominium conversion ordinance that encourages preservation of rental housing.
Just put the first sentence back in.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, those are the two things I would like to see changed. And it's my understanding that it will then come back to us in the fall, and we'll consider actual adoption because when this goes to the council, they may also, you know, make some changes to it.
That's correct.
And to that, I completely support everything you just said in the Devils in the Details, and it's a big document. And I did try to go through and kind of do a lot of compares with the strikeouts. And I find that the amount of rental properties percentage-wise in Capitola is now significantly higher than it was before. When that ordinance was put into place, we were, you know, more owner than rent, and now we're like way this way. So, balancing it and using the words that balance it, I think are going to be really important. The other thing that I went looking for, the basis has changed from the census, the two thousand and ten census, to a survey that I had a bunch of questions about. And there's a lot of things...there's a lot of good information in the old one that is being stricken out. So, as the public is reviewing it, I think we should all really look at those details. And we have an opportunity, when it comes back for adoption, to change a lot of that, right?
That'd be great.
Okay.
So, I'm going to move, if I may, and then we can discuss. Move that we advance the housing element document as suggested by staff.
Second.
Yep.
He seconded. And I would just like, if this gray that's on these pages, my eyes are old. I had a hard, hard time reading that.
The final version will be in color.
If you can sort of lighten that up a little bit, that would help a lot.
This version's black and white, just to save a little money.
And I did see some typos, but I imagine all that's going to be gone through, some date things.
Right. And I gave them a list of numbers. Some were different on one page and another.
Yeah, I figured. I didn't list them, but I figure you're...
They'll catch all that.
But in the drafts that are made available to the public, if they could be colored and not black and white?
Digital copies will be color.
Okay, perfect. And it is going to be available on the website?
Yes.
So, we can refer to it as we just...
Absolutely. And we'll have color copies in the lobby and library.
Okay.
Jane?
All right.
We're ready.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do all in favor? Aye.
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 Unanimously passed. Thank you. Director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief items. Next week, Wednesday, we will have an Arcan Sight meeting that will have the Monterey Avenue Skate Park on the agenda. I know that's of interest to a lot of folks at home.
Say that again. What was the date?
It's July twenty-second. That's next Wednesday, three-thirty, right here, city council chambers.
I'm sorry, was that a...
Dude, I'm going on vacation that day.
What is that?
Arcan Sight.
Oh, it's Arcan Sight. Okay.
Design of the skate park.
Does require a design permit. It's a little unusual because normally when we're looking at design, it's above-ground structure. So, this is definitely a little different. And those meetings are typically informal, but I imagine this one will probably be a little different than typical, so.
Are you still estimating that that plan will get to the planning commission sometime in the fall?
Yeah, probably middle of the fall is my best guess right now. Every now and again, I get questions about the senior housing project that was approved a couple of years ago on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. That permit has since expired, but we did get an application in last week from a new developer who would like to build an eleven-unit residential development project. I believe they're a single-story?
Two-story.
Two-story. So, that'll probably come in to the planning commission next couple of months.
You mean on that same...
On that property. New project.
Conceptual?
Single-family residential.
Conceptual, yeah. Okay.
And then finally, there's a workshop in town that I've been asked to promote for gray water laundry to landscaping. If anyone is interested, it's this Saturday, July twenty-fifth, ten-thirty to noon. There's a fifteen-dollar admission. And if you're interested, you can go to santa cruz dot timebanks, one word, dot org. And once you pay, they will let you know where it's at. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Communications?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go first. Over the years, before I was on the council, the council...the previous councils were always very...looked askance and looked down their nose at second-story decks. They were sort of verboten here in Capitola. And when I was on the council, we carried that through, and I think councils after that did. But I've noticed that we've gotten a little bit away from that. And I...are we...is that something that would be in this current ordinance? Yeah. And I really think...I know it's the eleventh hour here, but I think as a community, we need to ask ourselves that again. How do we feel about those today? Because they were pretty much no, 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 no for years and years and years because of being so tight, tightly built, and people looking into other people's yards, privacy issues. So, I wonder if...
Didn't we talk about it a little bit?
We just had a discussion, yeah.
Yeah, and we talked about that...
Where was I?
The only place that they would really be acceptable is like facing onto the street.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Or if they faced into...
Right. But not, you know, what are the existing...we haven't really looked at the existing ordinances and, right? We didn't...
We...yeah, we discussed about opening it up to looking out over, like, if you had a river frontage or something like that, landscaped area or the beach or to the street.
I guess we did. Did we do that?
But not, you know...
But not...so, does that mean then that we're recommending that those are the only places and other places in our community within neighborhoods, center of neighborhoods, and all that?
Yeah, we said we didn't want them looking into other people's yards. We talked a little bit about there might be some place in Cliffwood Heights where the lots are bigger and there's wider setbacks. It might work, but not in areas like Riverview Terrace Jewel Box and...
Should be in that matrix that we're... Yeah, it'll... It should be in the matrix, okay.
It'll be in seventeen A, and we added exceptions for special circumstances such as the front facade, looking out to overspace, and then for restaurants and hotels. And we also acknowledge that a deck regulation does not necessarily belong in the floor-area ratio standards. Decks should be included in the updated design permit standards and individual neighborhood standards.
And Monday night, we're going to talk about the individual neighborhood standards, right, and what types of things we want to define for specific...
Continue that discussion. Thank you. That's all I have.
That does bring up an interesting point, though. I don't think it's necessarily the eleventh hour. I would encourage the commissioners, if there are some land use issues that you remember that we've dealt with historically that maybe we haven't talked about yet, maybe try to think about those between now and the next meeting because there would still be time to, you know, throw some items onto an agenda to talk about those. And over the next couple of months, that would be the time to do it.
And as you review this, if there are items that you don't think we got correct, please give me a call or send me an email. Let me know, and I'll put it on the slides so we can discuss.
So, I just had one minor request. You know, we've all been hit with the new FPPC regulations. And I think our conflict of interest maps are public information. You prepare them for, like, all of the planning commissioners and that. Can we get copies of those so, you know, we...
For the cost of reproduction.
Okay. I meant for the, you know, for the all of us so that we have some sense or some idea before we come to the meeting, like, you know...
Who's going to have to recuse themselves?
Who's going to have to recuse themselves?
And not only that, I talked to Rich about this earlier. I'd like to make sure that staff is looking at it and letting the commissioners know because of the three-hundred-to-five-hundred-foot radius issue, you don't always get a green card. And for a while, we had talked about having the planning commissioners that were in the five-hundred-feet radius get a card along with all the three-hundred-foot radius public. But it's really important that we have a map to look at and that they flag it so that we know who's not going to do it for a specific agenda.
We'll get it done.
And also, I'm wondering if our city attorney is going to be part of a larger push to get that put back to the three-hundred for small...get another small cities.
Yeah, he has talked to the FPPC and then also talked to Steve Woodside, who's a county council living in San Mateo. And they were talking about possibly asking them for an exception for public facilities, you know, so that at least if there's a project on this site, the city council can vote for it or vote on it. So, they do intend to continue talking. I have to think there's a number of other small cities affected by this in California. So, I think Jamie's also going to reach out to the League of California Cities, try to get their support for it, so.
Good. Thanks.
I did have one comment.
Yes.
So, this is on six sixteen Sunset, which I want to say I agree was an excellent report.
Very good.
The issue that I want to raise, which I've raised in the past, and it's kind of a fine line, maybe it's personal to me, but it's a question of how far the staff goes in asserting a position on a discretionary item such as a variance. I mean, the professionals, which you are, know things and do things in terms of planning that you learn and you're very good at. And then the commission is chosen because of a lot of experience in some of these discretionary items as whether variance should be granted and so forth. I think we bring a different perspective to the process than the staff does. So, when the staff gets a discretionary item, I think the recommendation was too strong on six sixteen. It should be more like, here are the factors that would favor or would not favor a variance, and that's something for the commission to make a decision on. In this case, it was, you know, it was a very strong denial, which we all agreed with. And we probably would have got there anyway. But I think just from a process standpoint, at least, that's my opinion, is that the staff position should be not that strong in terms of taking a side.
Well, I think we ought to, since we're talking about this, I think we ought to look a little closer at the whole variance question because I've never seen a variance granted because other people did things on their property prior to the city even being incorporated or prior to, you know, the city putting in place its ordinances. I mean, to me, the variance is...it's really close. It has to do with the size, shape, and topography of the lot. That is unusual, and it's those factors that allow you to grant the variance, not just past practices of what has gone on in the area. So, you know, I think we want to get back a little more to, you know, what the state regulations say that, you know, when you can and can't, cannot grant a variance.
I personally kind of liked the...and I think there were...I think Ryan did a great job with putting that report together. But I think it was kind of a justification of their position. But for me, it was great to have that research done for me so I could say...
Oh, yeah.
So, that, to me, gave me a lot of background into...because you know what happens, and it's next, like, well, this guy got it, that guy didn't get it. And you feel like, you know, you have to...while I don't feel obligated to follow past mistakes, I liked having that information there. So, for me, I thought it was a great...
No, I agree with that. I mean, it's sort of like you put all the facts out there and then just don't pull the trigger.
Yeah, I mean, I've been accustomed generally of providing strong recommendations through my, you know, planning experience. Nonetheless, if this planning commission would like us to soften it up a little bit and just kind of throw out policy questions for you to grapple with, it's easier for us.
Well, I actually liked their...I liked having sort of a strong recommendation because I thought they did a lot of background information to justify why it was.
I don't think we would have done as good a job sitting up here without...we could not have cited those things and made it seem to the applicant that it was so cut, clear-cut. And in this situation, it was very difficult to say no to that applicant. And I really appreciated having all of that information to back me up, to feel, to do the hard things with him sitting there. And so, I'm just wondering about, you know, what is discretionary? Is it always a variance? Is it something else? If we start telling our staff, "You can recommend here, but you can't recommend there," then when do they not? When do they? I think...
Well, I think every staff report needs to have a recommendation of approval or denial for, you know, a set of reasons. I think that's their job, part of it, to bring it to us. Now, how strong it is, I mean, how do you weaken the word deny? I don't know.
Or that deny? Consider deny it.
Consider denying it? I don't know. Just deny it.
Yeah, and I have heard it said that way. I mean, I've seen it said that way.
I mean, I've seen some agencies that'll give options, you know? That'll just list out three or four different options that the planning commission could take. Prove it, deny it, modify it, and give rationale for it.
Look at the Coastal Commission agendas, for example. And they always have a set of findings if you're going to approve and a set of findings if you're not going to approve. And, you know, they take more of a middle ground on it. You know, they take more of a middle ground on it.
And that's illuminating when you see the two together, yeah.
This report actually did include an alternative and a set if we chose not to deny it.
Yes, well, it had the other parking space, too, alternative.
But I... You know, what's always difficult is when you look at these and you look at these garages that are, you know, ten feet by twenty feet. And if you looked at the plans, you know, they've got a washer and dryer in there, they've got the hot water heater, you know, which maybe may be replaced and put on the outside. But still, there's... If you have other activities going on there, the chances are that garage is not going to get used as a garage.
It'd be interesting to do a study in Capitol and see how many garages are actually used as garages. I'm not advocating to do that, but it would be really interesting.
I think there's two on your street, right? Yeah, that's... I know, you too.
Dale parks in there.
My car's in my garage.
But they're those little bitty cars.
I like to see it. I think it's good that we have the staff's opinion, which is the professional's opinion, like you're saying, and the community's opinion.
Maybe it's just a matter of degree.
And it's so hard when people say, you know, "I'm going to live in this house the rest of my life," or "We're having a new baby." And, you know, we're all human, and we want to be compassionate to that. But, you know, I look at how many houses, you know, got approved here in Capitola or whatever because someone was going to live there forever. It was a special circumstance, and three years later, it's a whole new...
Possibly the majority of them.
Yeah, the majority of them.
Majority of them.
And it's hard for people because I think they mean it when they say it. It's just, you're right, life happens and changes happen.
You know, that's going to be a small place for that family, even, you know, what they propose, so...
And when you do recommend denial, you tell the applicants that you're recommending denial and give them all manner of suggestions on how they can...
I generally prefer to start with that if we even have an inclining that we might go that way. You know, bad news never gets better with time.
There you go. Any other communications?
I think the minutes are excellent.
Thank you.
I mean, I've seen a lot of minutes go through this town, and there is a great, significant improvement in them.
Thank you, Linda. So, I know it's late and there's probably nobody at home still watching, but just a reminder, we are adjourning to our next meeting, which is Monday, the twentieth. It's a special meeting on the zoning code and its neighborhood character and non-conforming units. That will be the topic of our discussion, so we'll see you on Monday night at six P.M. right here.